City Council meeting in order July sixteenth, twenty twenty five. I've asked all councilmen allowed allegiance and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Lau. And if anybody needs hearing, um, hearing aids or hearing devices, please see Ms. Swanson. She can help you out there. To avoid meeting disruption, please place cell phones in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. All meetings are recorded when addressing the council. Please sign in, state your name, speak clearly into the microphone. We'll now move on to line item one point two roll call and, um, Ward one, Councilman Hannan is present. Ward two, Councilwoman Zaberski is present. Ward three, Councilman Lau is present. Ward four, Councilman Torres is present and Ward five, Councilman Mendoza is present. One point three, this is portion of the meeting devoted to public. The public may comment on any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Items not included on the agenda cannot be acted upon other than to place them on a future agenda. If you wish to comment, you can do so in person at the meeting or raise your hand featured in Zoom star nine if you're participating via phone. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Please avoid repetition. The mayor may at his discretion hold comments until the second public forum at the end of the meeting. Public comments submitted prior to four P M. The day of the meeting will be provided to city council and added to the record, but will not be read during live meeting. Any public input received after four P M. The day of the meeting will be included in the public record, but may not reach council members before action is taken. Is there any public input at this time? Is there any, anyone on Zoom, Swanson? No. Okay, we will move on to line item one point four, looking for approval of the agenda. Councilman Lau.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Lau, seconded by Councilman Hannan. Please vote. And that motion carries five zero. Looking for a motion on the consent agenda, Councilman Lau.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move on the consent agenda with two point two pulled to discuss and two point four to be pulled for next meeting.
A second.
We have a motion by Councilman Lau, seconded by Councilman Hannan. Please vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, I just think the.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I think that number is incorrect. Two point two is.
Two point two two.
Two point two two. Okay.
Sorry, I, I do believe you said two point two, but you're correct. It's two point two two.
That'll work.
That motion carries five zero. We will now go to line item, um, two point, um, two point four for discussion. Oh, I mean, two point two two and, um, Public Works Director Barry Williams.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Barry Williams, Public Works Director for the record. Uh, this item is for possible action to purchase a VAC con for the city of Fernley's Water Distribution Department for an amount not to exceed seven hundred thousand. Uh, just for clarification, the, uh, proposal or the quote that was attached to the original staff report was incorrect. Uh, you do have the correct proposal in front of you and, uh, we do have some copies on the back table as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Lau.
I'm ready to make a motion and I want to tell you, Barry, you did a great job. This is a good number on the purchase. These vac trucks are really needed and they're a blessing to have. Whoever invented them, hopefully goes to heaven. So I'd like to make a motion on, um, two point two.
Two. A second.
Two point two two.
Two two, yeah.
To approve the vac truck.
Thank you. Um, so we have a motion, uh, by Councilman Lau, seconded by Councilman Hannan. Please vote. That correction was made two point two two. Correct. Thank you.
No, it kicked me out. I'm a yes.
And that motion carries, um, five zero.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to line item three. Uh, this is items of various public entity representatives to provide general information to council and public. No action will be taken and we have sheriff's department here. Yes.
These vac trucks are amazing. They take a pipe and break the asphalt.
I'm Sergeant Sam, I'm sure he's been down for a minute in a moment. I haven't been hearing from her. Always allowing us to, to have a statement here. Um, not much, um, to relay from us, um, other than, uh, fourth of July seemed to go really well. No major incidents during the fourth. Uh, great gathering. Unfortunately, Sheriff's Office didn't win the pig this year, but, uh, we'll, we'll come after that next year. Um, nothing to pass.
I just wanted to let, I just wanted to let you know that is now tied two, two. So the sheriff's department is one, two years and the fire department is one, two years. So next year will be the deciding factor.
That's right. And, uh, hopefully we won't result in drastic measures and handcuff firefighters to defense. As far as I see it, just patrol work and, and my position as a sergeant, um, we've kind of been seeing an uptick with DUIs in Fernley lately. Um, I commented to chief deputy just now, I've had my third felony DUI arrest this year and those are a little bit more uncommon, but I encourage members of our public to call in reckless drivers. I mean, we have Star N H P, we have nine one one, um, but we need to get DUI drivers off the road. Um, going forward, uh, we're kind of in the middle of summer and halfway, already halfway through the year. So, uh, Fernley's busy, um, as you know, but Sheriff's Office is, is, um, still running hard and handling calls for service and being proactive out there. So that's the most comment that I have for everybody.
All right. Do we have any questions? Councilman Lau? Okay, no questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
North Lyon County Fire Department. There you go.
Good evening, everyone. J T McCoy, captain with North Line Fire. Um, just giving a quick breakdown of our June incidents that we had. Uh, we ran a total of three hundred and twenty six, uh, nine one one calls. Um, two hundred and thirty four of those were EMS calls that led to one hundred and forty five transports to hospitals. Um, we received mutual aid from neighboring departments twenty two times for the month. And a couple of incidents, we assisted with the brush fire off of I eighty and Wadsworth exit. Um, and then no other major incidents until fourth of July, when we had the outside fire at Trex. Um, and then after that, we were able to still catch a pig unlike the cops. Um.
That was a good job.
So Aaron, I have nothing else for you guys.
I was gonna say, you guys must have really got warmed up for the pig chase.
Yeah, it's definitely warm enough.
Well, I will say, I, I did notice the smoke on the fourth of July when I was out at the park and I was really amazed at how quick that black smoke was gone and the, uh, efficiency and the quickness that the fire department was able to handle that call. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments from council? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. So, um, let's see, do we, uh, Ms. Altek, Deputy City, uh, Manager, did you have anything to bring forward?
Actually, I do. Um, the Community Response and Resource Center is built and received temporary C of O this last week and should have the final, uh, certificate of occupancy by the end of this month. And we are, um, we've planned a ribbon cutting for August twenty seventh, which is a Wednesday at two P M. And all of this public is invited. We'll send out more invitations and more notifications when that gets closer, but pretty exciting.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other, um, directors? Have anything to report at this time? Okay, seeing none. Let's go ahead. Start with, uh, Councilman Hannan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just want to welcome everyone tonight. Um, I had the pleasure of having lunch today with, uh, our esteemed sheriff, Brad Pope and Deputy Chief Branningham. It's always good to talk to them and, uh, learn about, um, the activities in Fernley and the things they're doing to keep the folks in Fernley and Lyon County safe. I appreciate that. I want to echo the sentiment of the mayor for, uh, North Line County Fire for the, the incident at Trex. Um, so happened that I have a friend that, that works at Reno Fire and was listening to the traffic, the radio traffic. And he, um, commented to me that he thought it was, um, very proactive of them for the, the mutual aid that they requested in such a rapid amount of time. And the fire was extinguished, uh, and they took all precautions necessary to keep the public safe. So I want to thank them for that. Uh, I had a, um, meeting out at, uh, Polyglass out on Lion Drive. Um, met them, looked at some of the expansion projects they're doing. We're excited for the expansion of Polyglass, uh, and our local business here in Fernley. Um, and I, and I attended the fourth of July celebration. The parade was amazing. I sat in a booth, uh, with Ms. Altek and the folks from, um, Animal Services and the friends of the Fernley Animal Services. Uh, and we sold some drinks and some snacks to, uh, help fundraise for the, uh, what we hope is a new animal shelter in Fernley. So I want to thank everyone for their attendance. Uh, great parade, great time and, um, look forward to next year. Thank you.
Councilwoman Zaberski.
Um, I also had a great time at the fourth of July, the parade and the park. It was amazing. I honestly never been more proud to see a bunch of adults barefoot chasing a pig. I'm like, yes. Um, I think that, um, the, the main thing that I have is obviously for our softball little league. I'm gonna do a little bit of proud mom moment because it's been all consuming of, of my life. Um, that all three of the girls in each age division made it to state. So, um, our twelve U division got third place in the state tournament. Our ten U division got, um, second place. So they're finalist. They got the big honking rings that say state finalists, which is really cool. And our fourteen U girls or our junior girls, um, won first place in the state tournament. So they're headed right now to Tucson, Arizona to play in the regionals. And their first game will be against Idaho Friday at seven thirty. So that's pretty big for Fernley. It's really exciting. It's, uh, I mean, I think that for a long time Fernley has kind of been, you know, the underdog. I don't, I, I think that, that we're really starting to create a name in our youth sports that we're, we're somebody to be reckoned with. So really excited about that.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Lau.
You had a great sports commission meeting on the ninth. Barry and I had a, a great discussion with a lot of the, the, uh, sports teams in town. We have a lot of issues. Barry knows of them. And he's gonna probably be bringing some things forward. And then yesterday I had coffee with the new Chamber of Commerce manager. And he had a lot of questions on what was going on here in town. I gave him my two cents. I said, the best thing to do is go see, go to the gym, go see Denny. He'll give you, he'll tell you his, he'll give you his fourteen cents. So we're trying to get, move along and getting people along in this town, bringing them together.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Torres.
Uh, real quick, the first thing is again, uh, just reiterating what a great fourth of July it was. Um, the second thing is this Friday and Saturday is, uh, Friday and Saturday is the Stan Sera Sola roping event. Um, memorial at the out of town park at rodeo grounds. Um, and then Saturday and Sunday is the, uh, junior rodeo at the same location. So if you guys can get out there, please support them. Um, the senior citizen advisory committee did their fan drive. Uh, we were able to give away, um, all of the fans that were purchased or donated to our, um, senior citizens. Luckily it was done, um, planned to be done and completed before this heat wave came through. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mendoza.
Yes, I, I only have one thing to report. Well, two, uh, fourth of July, just like everybody else was awesome. Uh, thank you, Becky. I know you're a big part of that. So I appreciate your work. Endless hours of probably people complaining and you just moving forward. So thank you for that. Um, one other thing that I want to bring up is we do have a firefighter within our fire district uh, that we're raising money for at Black Bear and we're gonna do a Black Bear takeover for them again. Um, but this one's a little closer to home. Uh, this is a person within our fire department that's been affected with cancer and we're trying to support the treatment of their family. And it'll be August thirteenth and, um, I believe the sheriffs may be getting involved with that. And so we'll both be out there serving and raising money for one of our own. So I'd like to see all you guys there and, uh, bring all your money. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I think, uh, Councilman Mendoza failed to say how easy he thought it was gonna be to chase a little pig, but he learned there. It's not so easy according to my son, what Joe was telling him. So, uh, congratulations, you guys.
Yeah, we ended up walking away with a pig, bleeding forehead, bleeding lip. So, uh, we'll, we'll keep that one. We're, we're coming back again hard next year though.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, I know the sheriff caught it last year and I don't know, are you guys raising these pigs and then having a big, big, uh, luau with your teams or?
So there was, this was the first year that a wager was requested and, uh, the wager was, um, and it's the first year we're gonna do this. Is, uh, whoever loses has to do the luau for the other department. And, uh, so Deputy Lynch is raising the pig. It looks like this is Pope's first time hearing it. So, uh, so we're, we'll, we'll be planning a, a pretty big shindig for the fire department and sheriffs. You know, next summer as the, the pig gets raised. But yeah, we're raising the pig this year. So it's gonna be good.
Awesome. Awesome. All right. Uh, so what I have is, uh, from the city manager's office, there's a lot really going on. Uh, a lot of, um, open seats that we have, especially with the new budget that came in. Uh, we are doing a lot of, um, um, interviews, applications for planning and in the engineering department. Um, so that's going on. And then also I just kind of wanted to let council know that the three million appropriations money that we put in uh, for the surface, uh, water intake, uh, right now it's still looking really good. Like we might get that three million dollars to help with the surface, uh, water intake, uh, project. So, um, that's all I have. Uh, let's see. Oh, also, you know, I, I, I did want to congratulate, um, our, are they called juniors or the fourteen U? Juniors, um, on winning their state and, you know, Councilwoman Zaberski is correct. Um, we have a very, very successful high school softball team where Diane Chapin, uh, is the most winningest coach in the state of Nevada when it comes to sports in any division. And, um, and that, you know, I can attribute that to the, the youth programs that we have that come up that lead into high school sports. So, and I, I do believe Diane Chapin is the president of the Youth Girls Softball League. Is that correct?
Mm hmm.
Yeah. So our, our high school, um, softball coach is also the president of the youth. So, I mean, she's doing it right. And, and that's why we're so successful. So we just wish them all the best, um, in their endeavors to come here come Friday.
Real fast, um, shout out to Coach Chapin because she has tried, she doesn't have any girls on this team and she has traveled to every tournament. She's there for every game, giving them advice. She's ran, you know, summer programs of extra softball practices so that she can practice. I mean, it's a good investment because they're coming up to the high school next year, but, but she's, she is committed as can be. So I'm, I'm very grateful for her.
Yes, very good. Is there a, is there a fundraiser going on too, to get them to the next step, help with their travel and stuff?
So, so they're actually on their way there now, but we do have a couple flyers floating around Facebook where they have Venmo and different, um, you know, different apps that you can donate, uh, money to the softball girls because yeah, traveling to, we've, we've now done three weeks in a row, Yarrington, Vegas, and now Arizona. So it's definitely not easy, but yeah, you can go online and, and donate and the girls are on their way there now. So any, anything helps for sure.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Uh, so if there's no other reports, we'll move on to three point two Nevada State Legislative Update. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Councilman Lau.
A great way to raise money, uh, we've got our funds to go back east to Washington, D C was a luau. And somebody has a hog here.
I know somebody's probably got about three of them. Oh.
Yes.
Um, so let's go ahead and go with, um, uh, three point two Nevada State Legislative Update where Flynn Guducci, um, Mindy Elliott is here to give us a report. Mindy?
Well, good afternoon, everyone. For the record, Mindy Elliott with Flynn Judiciary Government Affairs. And it seems very apropos that I would be following a discussion about pork. Cause, uh, uh, coming from a hundred and twenty day session, there was a lot of discussion about money and pork and everything else. So I have a PowerPoint and there it is. Oh, on the side. Wrong side? Oh, I have to turn it on. I thought it was on. Sorry, sorry. All right. Governor Lombardo had his priorities that he, that he laid out in the state of the state, education, economic development, diversification, public safety, health and human services and housing. We have two representatives. We have Senator Robin Titus and Assemblyman Greg Koenig. Uh, Senator Titus is from Yarrington and Senator Koenig is from, uh, Fallon, Nevada. Worked very close with them on multiple fronts. We had a regular session that began on February third, twenty twenty five. We adjourned, signee die, June third. No special session yet. There's a lot of discussion and I'll, I'll talk about that when we get into some additional, um, as we get into the, uh, PowerPoint. Here's a legislative overview. There were one thousand two hundred and fifty four bill draft requests. Total introduced bills were one thousand two hundred and ten. Total bills that died were six hundred and four. The governor signed five hundred and nineteen. Governor vetoes were eighty seven. And the registered lobbyist was always as a big number is one thousand one hundred and fifty one registered lobbyists for, um, for sixty three legislators. We do have a report. Um, we have a hard copy that we've provided to staff and to the council and to and the mayor. We also have available for the general public. We have some copies. Thank you to Mr. Mortensen and his staff for helping with those copies. Um, also in the report, um, we tracked for, uh, for the city of Fernley about a hundred and twenty seven bills. So almost ten percent of the number of bills that were introduced, we actually were tracking for Fernley, uh, whether it be indirect or, or direct. But we also in the reporter, we're providing a section for general business because that's something else that we track. So we bifurcated the report. So the general business, um, is also included the report and for the, for the general public, we've provided that as well. Um, I also want to let you know, we'll be updating the report. I noticed that the report is not numbered. So we will be sending to the staff, um, a report that has, um, actual bill numbers. So the twenty twenty five legislative priorities were affordable housing and homelessness, employment law, economic development, tax abatement, healthcare, and then there was some judicial. They, they were looking at public safety and trying to change some of the, the laws. So in the report, the twenty twenty five bill signed local government, we have A ten, A B ten, which allows local governments to create N I Ds. Um, and this is really for, it's more for the larger communities, but it is a tool that's now available for local jurisdictions to replace a privately owned water or sewer system. Um, the local government can create the N I D with flexibility in the assessments. S B seventy two, uh, makes separate committee meetings optional, updates timelines for filling vacancies, A B one twenty eight, one twenty eight, creates a public records task force that will meet in the twenty twenty five, twenty six interim session. We seem to have this every year, a discussion about public records requests. And once again, I think we had a task force about six years ago and we are creating another task force to see if we can get to some for, some form of agreement. A B seventy, three seventy five allows local, local ordinances, ordinances to enable delivery of alcohol from food establishments. S B fifteen updates Clark County administrative procedures. We watch some of the larger jurisdictions because it can filter down. And so I just wanted to make sure that you had the information on fifteen. And seventy three, again, is a Clark County, um, establishes for adoptance ordinance of jurisdictions participating multi-jurisdictional business licenses. Um, again, we just watch these things as it relates to, um, local governments because it can, uh, filter down into smaller jurisdictions. Housing was a huge, huge, um, uh, topic this session. This is probably the most, uh, positive outcome for housing in any session. A B two eleven requires the rehab of substandard unsafe multi, multifamily rental property. Um, A B two forty one requires multifamily housing be allowed in commercial zoning districts. So let me explain that. So a, a lot of, there's a big boxes, especially as there's been a shift from storefronts. So I think of K marts. If you drive in Carson City, there's that large K mart that's just a big box. This allows for, um, the local jurisdiction to, um, move that from commercial to a multifamily project and it expedites the way that the, um, project can go online. And it allows for the state to provide some, uh, potentially some tax credits into the project. A B three sixty six establishes the Nevada Supportive Housing Development Account. This is important for the local jurisdictions. These are for projects that are really targeted to thirty percent of, um, area median income and less. So if you have a project in the city of Fernley, this allows for the wraparound services to be, uh, for, um, for the befunding. And it also made the supportive housing grant program. It was a grant program. Now it'll be a permanent fund. So every two years with the legislature meets, they will be creating the, uh, they will be providing some set aside funds for this project. Currently there's fifty million dollars, approximately fifty million dollars that's available, uh, in the state for those services. Um, A B four seventy five, uh, appropriates twenty one million dollars to support eviction aversion programs. Seven hundred and fifty thousand will go towards, um, Nevada rural housing, um, and is specifically for rural Nevada. And I see Katie Coleman's here. Nevada rural housing was great, uh, to work with as we, we were frantically trying to get money into this program, especially as there's eviction needs, um, for the city of Fernley. Uh, A B five forty was the governor's bill. It creates, um, a new attainable housing fund and there's a hundred and thirty three million dollars. What's important, it includes twenty five million dollars for reimbursing municipalities for deferred way fees on projects that qualify for attainable housing. Um, we worked, uh, closely with the governor's office to, um, to set aside this twenty five million dollars. So as projects come before you and they need help from the, the city for sewer hookups or whatever it might be. Once the project is funded, you can go back to the state and receive, depending on if it's a thirty percent A M I, sixty percent A M I, hundred and twenty, uh, hundred and fifty percent A M I, there'll be a certain amount that the, that the city of Fernley can apply for and you'll receive reimbursement as long as it's, as long as the twenty five million dollars still stands. Um, bills that failed, A G R one, there's always a. Bills that failed, AGR 1, there's always a lot of discussion about real estate property, um, real, the reset on property tax on sale. AGR 1 was going to go to the vote of the people. It needed to go through the legislature twice and then it would go to the general election. It didn't get out of the, it didn't get out of the legislative session. So we're back to square one on that. AGR 10 was a resolution urging the release of federally managed land in Nevada for housing. That also didn't, um, didn't make it. Economic development, what passed? I want to thank, um, uh, the mayor and, uh, Councilman Torres. We worked really hard on Senate Bill 69. It was brought forth with Story County. This creates a formula between a participant that's receiving abatements at the, uh, that the state, uh, from GOED, between the participant, the participant is the business and the governing body to enter an agreement for local jurisdictions to request reimbursement from entities to free the cost of local government services. This is up to 10% of the cost of the project that there, and, um, it, you will work with the, with the city council, I'm sorry, with the city manager and with the, um, with our legal counsel, um, to develop that reimbursement mechanism and to justify what it needs. And it really is to help with streets. But whatever sewer, whatever, whatever that impact that business is going to have in the Fernley. Um, we worked very, very closely with the, the governor's office of economic development. The governor's office as well as Story County to come to an agreement on this bill. You can see the failed list is huge for economic development. And part of the reason for that is there was a lot of issues relative to funding this, this cycle. We started out, um, of the session, 325 million dollars in the hole. The balance, the budget didn't balance from the governor, GovRec, governor's recommended budget. They had to find 325, 325 million to backfill before we even started the, really started any discussions. Um, we were behind the, the eight ball out of the gate with the economic forum. Uh, the, the dollars are just, very skinny as it relates to, um, you could see all the, the film tax, uh, bills died. A lot of projects that were outside of the normal funding stream from GovRec didn't even get a hearing. Um, so it was very, it was pretty frustrating this session to have really good projects. I heard a lot of good projects that didn't move forward. For instance, the train in Carson, they were trying to receive some funding. Um, there was just not any money, um, as it relates to these types of opportunities. Senate Bill 78, which was Fernley bill, we, we, I, we couldn't even get a hearing. Um, it was, we were requesting 15 million dollars. Um, and it just, if it was, if it was one shot funding, it was just difficult this session. I wanted to talk about some vetoes, um, and interrupt me any, anytime if you have questions. I know you have a lot on your agenda, so I want to get through. Um, on the vetoes, these are the, of the 87 vetoes, these are the vetoes that impacted, um, the local jurisdictions. AB 79 limited campaign contributions and special elections to $5,000. Um, he vetoed that as there should be encouragement for everyone not to participate, not discouragement. AB 226 required a mu, um, community benefits agreement. And that was in the, um, during an abatement process at the GOED. The governor felt that mandating a community benefits agreement, and this was for every, um, abatement request, went too far. 283 changed the process for summary evictions. Um, the, would have increased the costs and time for the eviction process. In working with the Nevada rural housing, it could have potentially increased the eviction process from 30 days all the way out to almost 120 days. Uh, it was, um, very, um, it's, it always sounds good, right? Until the, until you start putting the actual realities to what the process is going to do. AB 3, 306 would have increased the locations for voters between early voting. And I know we received a call from staff that there was a concern about, um, how are we going to manage this? There's security concerns. So that bill was actually vetoed. AB 496, another call I received requiring county and city clerks to post information on the internet. Um, about, um, elections veto message concerns with mandates. Um, we felt, he felt that the municipalities have a good handle on what needs to be done. AB 499 was a voter ID required mail drop box. That was vetoed to the language. So if you go back to 306, right? That required the, the mailboxes, uh, drop boxes. So there was an agreement that the voter ID bill was going to move forward from the governor. So they put the 499, AB 499 moved forward at the very last second. They dropped the language from 306 that had been vetoed into AB 499. And the, the, the governor would rather take the voter ID requirement and take it to the vote of the people. It already passed once. It was the highest, um, ever, the highest, uh, initiative IP in the state. It received almost 80% of, of the vote, positive vote in the state. He had to veto 499 because they, they put a poison pill in by putting, and they being the Democrats, sorry. Put AB 306 language into 499. So he vetoed it. He says, I'll take the fight to the people. Um, AB 534 revised provisions for mail ballots. You could see there was a lot of election discussion. A lot, a lot. They kept trying to put something in that would get signed and, and he kept vetoing the, uh, the language. AB 597 was an interesting bill. It would have allowed nine partisans to participate in the primary election process, which currently is bifurcated Republicans, Democrats. If you're Republican, you run as a Republican ticket for partisan, um, uh, offices. And if you're a Democrat, it would have been, you know, you're a Democrat, you vote for the Democrat, Republican, you vote for the Republican. This would have opened up the, the primary election to, to everybody. So he voted, he vetoed that, that one as well. He did think that was, uh, good policy. Furthermore, it had been rejected by the people in the last election cycle. So he said, you're actually taking the will of the people and, you know, they've already spoken. They don't, they don't want this. Here's the Senate vetoes. Um, Senate Bill 99 was a linkage fee for housing as what that means that in a development is being, um, uh, being, uh, constructed in Fernley. There could be a linkage fee that would be attached to each of the projects and that linkage fee that was on those houses. For instance, it's a $300,000 house. You create a linkage fee and within that development, the city can say, I want 10 houses that are going to be for 60% AMI, um, individuals. Well, how do you, how does the developer pay for that? They actually increase the cost of the house to the person that's buying the $300,000 home. Now it's going to be $330,000 so that it offsets the cost of the 60% AMI. The, the concern is, is that it increased the cost of the burden on home buyers. And our argument, we, we had an opportunity to talk to the governor's staff and our concern was if someone is barely qualifying, right? We're trying to get first time home buyers in these homes. And if, if they're barely qualifying, you're, you're, you're taking more people out of the market because they still have to qualify rather than a $300,000 house. Then now they have to qualify for a $330,000 home. So he vetoed that one. Senate Bill 100 governed the poor performance of election duties. Um, the governor vetoed due to potential overreach by the Secretary of State. He said that it created additional layer of oversight. Uh, Senate Bill 104. Everyone might recall the presidential electors that, and they filed the false statements and there was a lot of litigation. Um, the governor, they tried to put into law that you can't, you can't do that. The governor vetoed due to constitutional concerns. He says, look, this is, you know, it's in the constitution. I mean, we, we have a, the right of due process. SB 420, 22 would have required extended at DMV, extended hours at DMV for voter registration. He, at, at the very end of the, um, elections, um, cycle. Um, the governor vetoed over concerns of proof of residency, et cetera, because they could walk into DMV, say, I want to be, I want to, um, uh, register to vote. And, uh, right now you, you have to show some form of, of, of proof of residency. And so he had some concerns about, um, that particular bill. Senate Bill 428 would have required additional information available to public, including home addresses. He was concerned, and this is for all of you, for elected officials. The governor vetoed due to concern that the residential addresses of elected officials, all elected officials would be required to be released. In, in smaller jurisdictions, it's probably not as, as disconcerting as if you're a school board member in Washoe County where there are, there are some issues or at, in Clark County. A lot of these individuals have a PO box and they keep their, uh, personal addresses for safety reasons, right? They keep it private and, and he was concerned that SB 428 would have had that requirement. Um, Nevada 2025, Nevada Legislature and Local Government. We had, uh, weekly meetings with the Nevada League of Cities. We also had week, weekly meetings with the lobbyists. Um, separate from the weekly, uh, meetings, I would see, uh, Councilman Torres on the meeting. Um, I think I saw, um, the mayor on the meetings. So we would, we would, it was all by Zoom. Um, and we worked with the Nevada League of Cities and we also worked with NACO on a lot of the bills. Um, we, and of course, it goes without saying, I don't know what I'd do without staff. I would call and say, hey, I, I have this bill. I'm sending it to you. Um, Mr. Mortensen, I, I think, I think this is a bad bill. Or he would call me, hey, have you looked at this bill? And I go, yeah, I think it's a bad bill, but I'm not so sure. So I know I publicly thanked, um, when I was on the Zoom, but in all sincerity of the mayor and all of you, um, your input was important to me as we, um, as we were going through this, the session. It was, it was a very long, hard, arduous session. Um, the rural caucus meetings, uh, the cowboy caucus, I want to thank. I know the mayor attended and so did Councilman Torres. I want to thank them for, for attending those meetings. It was, um, it's always good to have, they're early in the morning on Friday. So they have to get there at 7:00 AM. So heaven only knows what time they have to leave. Um, what's next? I, I talked a little about special session. So the special session, um, the discussion around special session is because of the big beautiful bill that is moving through, uh, that has moved through Congress. And now they're looking at some other clawback provisions on some of the, the cuts that they've made. There is, um, uh, a Medicaid issue shortfall in Nevada. There is a concern that, of course, the numbers are all over the place, right? The, the devil's in the detail, but the concern right now is the, uh, cuts will impact about 100,000 Nevadans that are currently on Medicaid. We are, um, we anticipate, I spoke to, uh, a, a assemblywoman Anderson who sits on Ways and Means and I said, what do you think? Are, are, you know, we're going to have a special session? She's not if, she says it's when. And she anticipates that we might have, uh, it'll be in the late fall. Um, right now we're going through department analysis and implementation of a lot of these bills. Uh, of course legislative relations, there's discussion that there'll be, um, 10, another 10 open seats this next legislative cycle. We had north of 25 this last legislative cycle. So if we had 25, that'll be 35. We have a gang of 63, so we will have a turnover of about half of the legislation, of the legislator, legislature. New regs, alleged commission, um, has just, they've met once. And those, the departments will start working through the regulations and as regulations come up that impact, the city will certainly be in touch with staff. We have a League of Cities Conference that, uh, we usually attend. It'll be in Henderson this year. And in 2026, just, uh, heads up, we have all the constitutional offices that are up. We have, uh, Governor Lombardo has announced, uh, Lieutenant Governor Anthony has announced. I know he's been here. Um, uh, Secretary of State, uh, has not, um, uh, announced yet. Uh, the Controller, Andy Matthews, he has announced. The, um, for Attorney General, um, the current Attorney General, um, Aaron Ford is term limited. Uh, right now you have two Democrats that have announced, which is Senator Canizaro and the current treasurer is at Koenig. And you also have Danny Tarkanian that has, that has announced. Secretary of State, um, we have Sharon Engel has announced on the Republican ticket. Um, there is some discussion, um, that the, uh, Cisco Aguilar may not run. Um, I'd be surprised, but he, there's discussion that he's a pretty talented guy and, and corporations are certainly looking at him. For treasurer, it's rumored that, uh, Assemblywoman Kasama, who is highly respected and is from, and she's a realtor from, um, Southern Nevada, that she is going to throw her hat into the ring. And we haven't heard yet on the Democrat side. So it's going to be a, another busy election cycle for, uh, for us. And I, uh, thank you for your time and it, it is, uh, without, without saying, it's an honor and a privilege to represent Fernley. I, you know, I just, I just love this. I've been representing you since 2011. And, um, on and off, I know you had Nick and everyone would probably like Nick better. He's more fun, but I think that, uh, and that's honest. He's a lot more fun than I am. I'm kind of the, I am the policy wonk, but I think that from the perspective of, you know, where we go next, Fernley is really making a name for itself. Uh, we have been meeting with legislators, uh, while they're, while they're, uh, while we were in session. Um, we had a bill for, uh, the inland park bill, which created, uh, which allowed for, uh, TIDs to be created, um, to help with the infrastructure of the inland park. That was a sibling woman back is who we met with. And that's an important bill for Fernley that, that passed and signed into law, which is just amazing. Um, our other inland port bill, we got it, we got it almost through. And, um, we, anything with an abatement, um, it just, anything abatement, one shot money, no matter, no matter how good the policy was. I, we, we just, we just had a very difficult, and we're not the only ones. Everyone had a difficult time because of that. Because of the, um, the realities of the funding. Um, so with that, I am open to any questions. I, I tried really hard to go fast, Mr. Mayor. I'm so sorry.
No, no problem, no problem. Councilman Lau?
Yes, great presentation, Mindy. The Cowboy Caucus, I was there in February. They keep going every.
The, uh, thank you, um.
Cause I, we, we didn't get any, I didn't get any information on that, that they kept going because I would have gladly gone down and ate all the bacon I could.
Okay. Um, Councilman Lau, uh, uh, apologize. I, I had, uh, for the record, Mindy Elliott. They, they meet every, once they get started, we meet every two weeks. And in fact, we, um, we, we sponsored, uh, the Flynn Judiciary, we sponsored one of the, the breakfasts and we will make sure that we will put that on every single one of your, um, calendars next session. And, and you're right, there's lots of bacon and they had, they had, they had the Nevada Basque Deli. I think they had them three times. They were the most popular, uh, breakfast. So my apologies.
And I didn't get to go to the, with the Basque?
I, I am, I.
That's wrestling there.
I am probably, I'm, I am in big trouble right now.
Yeah, you're in huge.
I'm in huge trouble, but my, my heartfelt apologies.
And, and how, how long do they go, those cowboy caucuses? Cause I feel that they're pretty useful.
They, they, um, for the record, Mindy Elliott, they run from 7:00 AM till probably 8:00 AM, 8:15. And then, then people, they moved it originally, it was at Fandango. Um, and then they moved it to the legislative building. So we got, we, it actually became, um, great because a lot more legislators came, uh, to the actual breakfast. I know Councilman Torres was there, several of them and a lot of the, I would have, go sit over there. I tell, go sit with her, go sit with him.
And, and they go from February to what, to May?
May. They, they end in May.
Yeah. Cause I only got one invite. How come Albert got all those invites?
I, I.
I need a hog. I need a hog. There's a lot of ham.
I apologize. I know. And we ju, and we just, and we opened this talking about pork.
Cheap.
I just can't even believe this. I apologize.
Drop it in my yard too. I'll take care of it.
Alive, alive or?
Alive, alive.
Live pork.
Are you going to name her? I'll give, I'll name her after somebody you know.
Okay.
What are you going to name at breakfast?
That'll be its last name.
Councilment Torres.
Sorry, Stan. Um, part of that was my fault. I guess I got the invites. I was hanging out with, um, Mindy a lot. So thank you. Um, I learned so much. Um, I love the environment. I love the game. Not enough to be a senator or state assemblyman. Um, but it, it was, um, truly a, um, I'll never forget this session and I look forward to next session. So we'll just continue, continue pushing forward and the, this council along with you, um, and with, with our staff, this was the most, um, And this council, along with you and with, with our staff, this was the most action that the city of Fernley has ever taken in its history. And there was only one bill, which was the small rail bill, that we either opposed or supported that we, that didn't go our way. So that, I mean, we had a, we're batting like nine hundred. And we'll bring that other bill back up if, if we have a special session. So thank you again, Mindy, I appreciate you.
No, I appreciate that, thank you, Councilman Torres.
Councilman Hannan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Ms. Elliott, thank you for the presentation, as always, excellent. And I enjoy seeing you, so. And for the record, Councilman Lau has quite the appetite. So if he goes to one of these, he might want order two or three meals for him. I think Fernley finally is a cog in the wheel, that's how I feel. We're finally at the table and we're finally making progress. And that's very exciting for me, it's very exciting for our constituents. And we're all super excited at what the future holds. So I just want to thank you for your steadfast work and your advocacy, always advocating for the city of Fernley. It's much appreciated and it's making a difference, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hannan.
Also, I'd like to say thank you, Mindy. I too learned a whole lot, this is the most I've ever been down there. And it's quite interesting how everything works and it's, it's an eye opener if you really don't know how the legislature works. But it was a good time, thank you for what you did and the presentations and stuff that you put together for the city of Fernley to, to present in front of the Assembly and the Senate. So it was, it was a pleasure working with you this year, so thank you.
Well, thank you. It really is sausage and pork and a lot of bacon.
I expected.
Bacon.
I invited me.
With no other questions, I, I just, I, I know, I, I can't say enough about the staff. I mean, they, they, for the record, Mindy Elliott, I, it, without the staff, my goose would be cooked, because sometimes I don't know, I don't think a bill will have an impact. And then I, I talk to staff and they're like, oh my gosh, Mindy. And so it's very appreciative and then I have to go talk to the legislator and, and say, listen, I'm going to go oppose unless you either pop cap it or change some stuff. So I appreciate everything from the staff.
Okay, thank you. Great presentation. Let's see. Let's move on to line item four now, Proclaimations by the Mayor, and we do have one. And this is for the Desert Pigs. Yes.
Pigs again?
Yep, Desert Pigs, you gotta love it. We're talking about pigs tonight, bacon. Anyways, whereas the Desert Pigs is a nonprofit organization founded in twenty eighteen by Phil Woolley to clean up illegal dump sites on public accessible land around the state. And whereas the mission of volunteer group is to make trails and open space safer for hikers, escrei, on off-road vehicles, wild animals. And whereas the group convenes every Saturday morning at a predetermined dump site using their own vehicles and equipment, the work at these sites is dangerous and is, and they are often made up of abandoned vehicles, tires, cans of paint, household trash, hypodermic needles and more. And whereas abandoned vehicles are a huge challenge for the Desert Pigs, Mr. Woolley has instrumental in the recent passing of A B four fifteen, which becomes effective October first, twenty twenty five, and makes removal of abandoned vehicles from public, from public accessible lands easier. And whereas the Desert Pigs have worked cleanup many communities around the state. Now, they now have chapters across Nevada, including Lion County, Carson City, Carson Valley, Fernley, North Valleys, Yarrington, Elko and Perump. And whereas Desert Pigs also participate in blood drives and have collected enough units of blood to save two thousand two hundred and fifty lives. Now therefore, I, Nellie McIntyre, Mayor of City of Fernley, along with the council, would like to express our sincere appreciation to the Desert Pigs Organization for cleaning up Nevada by removing over one thousand two hundred tons of trash. And witness thereof, I have here unto set my hands and cause the seal of the City of Fernley, Nevada to be affixed this sixteenth day of July, two thousand and twenty five. Thank you, and here to collect, this is Phil Woolley, is he here?
Phil Woolley, yep.
Oh.
Come on over, yeah, council. Let's have a couple.
For the audience that doesn't know, these guys have been absolutely amazing. A lot of the stuff they've done, it's also worked with Mark Four, our Public Works Department, Waste Management, it's been a great, great effort and they continue to just kill it.
Yeah, you know, another thing I want to say that wasn't mentioned in this, if everybody knows out by the racetrack where that big mess was out there in that camp, All right, we'll now move on to line item five, presentations, five point one, possible action presentation on the adoption of resolution twenty five dash zero one one, providing the transfer of the city's two thousand twenty five private activity bond cap, volume cap to the Nevada Rural Housing Authority.
Oh, now I'm on. Perfect. Good evening, my name is Katie Coleman, I am the Communications Director with Nevada Rural Housing. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council for a little bit of time this evening to briefly expand upon some of the highlights that we've included in our request to transfer your city's unused private activity bond cap. And just really quickly, as a recap, we've been around for a little more than fifty years and Nevada Rural Housing has evolved into a full spectrum housing finance agency. And we're really committed to meeting the needs of rural Nevadans through homeownership, rental assistance and housing development. And some of our impact to date includes more than eleven thousand homebuyers served since two thousand six. We have served through two point five billion in mortgages, forty five, forty seven million in homebuyer tax credits. And we serve about thirteen hundred renters every year through our federal assistance program. I love that Mindy Elliott mentioned A B four seventy five. We do have some special rental assistance programs. We love that that funding's coming into our agency so that we can continue to serve through some of those special programs. Funding like that will help us keep people housed, that's the entire purpose of those funds. We are in implementation mode with those funds. As we have information, information about that program, we'll get that information out to our communities, how that can be used, who can apply, and we'll make sure that your city knows about that. So I did want to make mention of that as Mindy talked about that. So we're really excited about that. That attainable housing bill that was signed by the governor is going to make some big differences in how we do housing in this state, so we're really excited about that. This evening though, I'm going to really home in on our homeownership programs and kind of the performance over the last year to talk about a request for that private activity bond cap transfer. So our success in our homeownership programs really is driven by collaboration. And your support has been key. Your city has been a longstanding contributor for, for the success of our programs through the transfer, transfer of that unused bond cap. And these transfers really allow us to create real lasting housing opportunities. And really it doesn't affect your local budget. So as a reminder, bond cap isn't money. It's a federal allocation that enables entities like ours at Nevada Rural to issue tax exempt bonds to fund qualified housing initiatives like our homeownership programs. And one of the most exciting outcomes of our recent support from you is our Launchpad Homeownership Program. Last year, I came to talk about the Launchpad Homeownership Program that was just launching, no pun intended, in June. And that program was made possible by that bond cap transfer. That was a twenty five million dollar mortgage fund and that served about eighty families, it was seventy nine to be exact. And it was really successful. We got that out the door and because it was so successful and with a partnership with the Nevada Housing Division, we now have another twenty five million out there right now available to rural Nevadans. It's really exciting, offering more opportunity for homeownership, getting folks in that door. Very specifically, because that's what I'm here to report on, since June of last year in your community, the Rural Homeownership Programs have assisted twenty one homebuyers, providing six point eight million in mortgages. So that's really exciting. And our outreach really goes well beyond program delivery, although those mortgages are the bread and butter. But we work directly with lenders and agents in your community and across the rural parts of our state. And we offer continuous training, support, homebuyer education, and we invest in advertising, social media, digital marketing. We've launched on Disney Plus on streaming advertising to make sure people know about this program and what's available. I'm going to be leaving behind some materials, make sure I know who to leave them with. Their custom for the City of Fernley, we have these really cool Rural Rock stickers. We're really trying to get out there and help share the message locally. And while we can help spread the word at Nevada Rural Housing, it's trusted local voices like yours that can really help move that needle. So huge favor from me to you, please help us spread that message. Thank you again for your continued support and for considering the request for that unused bond cap. Without that, this doesn't continue to make really those dreams happen for rural homeownership. So I'm happy to help answer any questions and.
We have Councilman Torres first and then Councilman Hannan.
Perfect.
I wasn't going to ask a question other than thank you for being here. I was going to make a motion when the questions were done.
Councilman, Councilman Hannan, did you have a comment or?
I was also going to make a motion, I'll yield back to Councilman Torres.
Okay, Councilman Torres.
I move to approve resolution twenty five dash zero one one, providing for the transfer of the city's two thousand twenty five private activity bond volume cap to the Nevada Rural Housing Authority.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Hannan, please vote. And motion carries five zero, thank you, Katie. We'll now move on to line item six, six point one, presentation, discussion, possible action regarding the selection of an executive search form to assist in hiring of a city manager from the three proposed, received, a C P S H R Consulting, Bob Murray Associates, and Prothman Executive Recruitment. And our city treasurer, Robert Carson, will present a little.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council, Robert Carson, City Treasurer for the record. So we're going to go through just a brief summary of the three proposals that were received and sent out to you all. So the mayor reached out and received three different proposals for executive search services to assist us in finding a city manager. The three companies that responded were C P S H R Consulting out of Sacramento, California, Bob Murray and Associates out of Roseville, and Prothman Executive Recruitment out of Issaquah, Washington. All three companies have similar proposals and similar processes and they are proposing a sixteen week or four month process to go through and select a new city manager. So the first one up is C P S H R Consulting. They have extensive history of recruiting city and county managers on the West Coast. They are, they have worked locally with the city of Reno in two thousand twenty, also with Churchill County, hiring their county manager. A lot of work in California, Arizona, Colorado, New Mexico and Texas. So pretty wide arrangement on there. They have a three phased approach to recruiting and that is developing candidate, excuse me, the candidate profile and recruitment strategy, an aggressive and proactive and robust recruitment, and then the selection process. So during phase one, they have four tasks identified. It was review and finalize the executive search process and schedule. Task two, they'd hold key stakeholder meetings where they would identify key priorities for the new city manager and any possible challenges likely to be encountered. Identify the type of working relationship that they want to establish with council and the public. Identify any specific competencies, experiences and attributes, and discuss the recruitment and selection strategies. From that, they will develop a candidate profile and a recruitment strategy. And then they will move into developing a recruitment brochure. And they did provide examples in the proposals that were sent out to you. So phase two, the aggressive, proactive and robust recruitment, they would place advertisements. They also had examples of their advertisements in there. They will go out to national associations, LinkedIn, government jobs, other websites. And they will also have direct emails to prospective candidates that they have from a candidate pool. They will identify and contact, again, potential candidates directly. They will also perform, perform a initial resume review and do screening interviews. So they will talk to the candidates and provide a written summary to help select finalists. And then they will present their finalists to the mayor, who will select who gets presented to council for appointment. And then the final phase, selection. So they will help us design the selection process. And they will also be on site to help administer the selection process. So they will help form interview questions. Yeah, evaluation, and they will even call the successful and unsuccessful candidates for us. They will do in-depth background checks on all the finalists that we have. And then they can even help with contract negotiation if we request it. They will also arrange for the following, so any follow-up interviews, in-depth reference checks, background checks and contract negotiations, like I just mentioned. So they're involved in the process all the way through and they help us design and evaluate. So their proposed fee is thirty thousand dollars with a one-year service guarantee. And in that guarantee is if the selected candidate does not complete a full year, then they will provide services to appoint a replacement at no cost. If the recruitment, if we're not able to find a success, excuse me, a successful candidate from the pool that they have, then they will extend their recruiting efforts and they'll continue screening potential applicant, or potential candidates. So the second company, Bob Murray and Associates, they have also worked locally. They assisted the City of Sparks and the City of Reno in two thousand twenty four with their city manager search. They're not in phases, their process is ten steps, as you can see there, and it's also a sixteen week recruitment schedule. Most of their recruitments have taken place in Northern California, but again, they did have the local experience. So in the first two weeks, they'll hold stakeholder meetings, council, mayor, department heads and outside entities that are interested in providing input, where they'll develop a candidate profile. They'll hold virtual meetings and they'll do online surveys to get as much input as we can get on what we're looking for in a city manager. So it'll define personality, management style, knowledge and skills desired. After that, they'll develop the marketing materials in a brochure. They also have a four-page, full-color brochure that will be developed. And they did provide examples of ones they've done in the past as well. And then they will place the advertising or advertisements and similar to C P S H R Consulting, they'll do professional websites, professional associations, LinkedIn. And they also have a deep pool of candidates that they'll contact directly. So the next month is more advertising and just getting the applications or applicants in and identified. So they'll do their brochure distribution, a social media campaign, and then targeted outreach. In the third month, they will do an initial resume review as well. They'll interview 10 to 15 candidates, and they will narrow those down to give us their proposed finalists. They will do a public records search to make sure nobody's got any outstanding issues that we need to be concerned about. And then they will present their recommendations, typically six to eight candidates, and they'll also provide a list of other applicants that did not meet their minimum qualifications during screening. In the last month, they will also help us with the interviews of the finalists that are selected. So they will be onsite and they will help develop the interview process and the evaluation process. And they will perform in-depth background and reference checks. They'll do up to two candidates, so if we're kind of have two in the running, they'll perform the background checks on both of those. And then they will organize the final interviews, and then they will help with negotiations and appointment of the new city manager. Their fee is slightly higher, so they have a base fee that starts at $40,000. And then there's optional costs for services that we can have them do. So if we want to go outside and above and beyond and do additional stakeholder meetings, it's $250 a meeting. If we want them to come onsite, more than just the final interviews, it's $1,500 a day plus travel expenses. Online surveys are $500 each, additional background checks are 300, additional reference checks are 500, and then additional hires $9,000 a candidate. They also have a guarantee that if the candidate selected does not last the full year or is terminated within the first 12 months, then they will go through and do the whole process again at no cost, outside of these listed costs for the additional advertising. If the initial recruitment fails and we can't find a candidate, they'll also do the recruiting services again with those additional costs added on to it. So a little bit more pricey on that one. And then Prothman Executive Recruitment, they operate mostly in the Pacific Northwest. They're in Washington. However, they are currently working on the fire chief for the Central Lion County Fire Protection District, and they have a four-step, four-month process. And the references they listed are not geared as much towards city or county managers. It's more the director-level position that they've recruited for, so public works, fire chiefs, police chiefs, that type of, excuse me, that type of position. So their first step is to develop a recruitment strategy. They'll do a project review and information gathering and research, where, again, they'll meet with the main stakeholders and develop a profile on who we want. The different candidate qualifications that we're looking for and how we want the city manager to interact. Then they will go out and identify target and recruit candidates, print and internet ads, targeted direct mail, and a focused candidate outreach from their pool of candidates that they have. And then they will also perform a preliminary screening, where they will conduct two rounds of interviews. They'll conduct background searches, public background searches on all semifinalist candidates, and they will interview the top six to 14 candidates and send packets directly to the mayor to meet with the city and identify the top three to five candidates for the final interview process. Again, like the other two, they will be on hand to help coordinate the final interviews. They will perform background checks and reference checks. They will help coordinate the candidate travel, provide full final interview packets, facilitate the final interviews and the evaluation sessions, and also help negotiate the employment agreement. So their fee is a base fee of $18,500 and then any extra expenses that we want to have. So the advertising, travel for consultants to be onsite, final interview packets, background checks, and then also the candidate travel that we'd be responsible for. They also have the same guarantee, but they also have a no obligation that we can cancel at any time if we decide to go in a different direction. The only thing we're on the hook for are any expenses that are already incurred. So with that, those are the three proposals that we had after reviewing the information presented. The mayor recommends that CPS HR Consulting be hired to lead the search for the new city manager. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for putting that together for council. Mr. Carson, I appreciate that. I had talked personally to all three different firms, and the CPS HR consultants were really great people. I know that our city engineer, Maria, has with, when she worked with RTC, had also worked with CPS HR Consulting, and they did a fantastic job for them in their searches. So going off that, I want to bring to this council and get your input as far as, I believe you guys got all the information that I received. And so I just kind of want to hear your input as well. Councilman Hannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Carson, for the presentation. It's too bad they don't offer an extended warranty beyond the one year. A little fun on, a little play there. I'm ready to make a motion. I don't have any questions. I've reviewed the documents. If anyone has any questions.
Councilman Mendoza, do you have questions, Councilman?
Yeah, kind of looking through some of the stuff. Is there any way to get reviews from each of these agencies from people that have hired before we make a decision, just to get some real information from real people that hired from these organizations and get some feedback from those entities?
Mr. Carson?
Yeah, Robert Carson, city treasurer for the record. If you would like, we can kind of postpone this to the next meeting, and we can reach out to the references that they've listed and get their feedback. Other than that, I'm sure we can look at online reviews and see if anybody's posted there too, if that's something that you would like.
Yeah, I personally would like to see us have some reviews so that we could review each one from people that are outside of their entity instead of just reading what they presented to us. I think that would be helpful.
Councilman Torres?
All three companies are, you know, look pretty promising. You know, I'm familiar with two out of the three. Is it, and this might sound very ignorant, is it common for the government entity to pay for a candidate's travel to come and interview?
I wouldn't say it's common. It's just kind of depending on who the consulting firm is. Sometimes they build it into their fee, sometimes they don't, where you're required to pay for it, as it happens. Just because of the geographic issues with travel, they're coming from the East Coast, it'd be more expensive than if they're coming from the Bay Area.
Okay, because I'm, the reason that I'm asking that is to me, that's just kind of a way out and left-field concept where you're bringing somebody, somebody's applying for a job for your entity, knowing where it is geographically, and then they want you to pay for them to travel out to give them 150 to 200 and something thousand dollars as a paycheck. It's kind of a, it's kind of a candidate risk.
Yeah, it just depends on what you decide to do as a council. If you want to build that into going through the review process, it can be offered, or we can say it's the candidate's responsibility for travel. That would be part of the advertising when we go through and do it.
Okay, and I'm not a hard no.
Sure.
I just, you know, just seeing what you're.
Yeah, it's entirely up to the council. Some jurisdictions like to do it, some would rather not and put it all on the candidate. And so it just depends on what your appetite is.
Okay.
Councilman Torres, I do know that last time when we went with Baker Tilly, they too have the city pay for travel expenses for the candidates to come and interview.
Okay.
That's what you were asking, right?
Yeah.
Is it common if the city pays for the travel expenses?
Okay. And then other than our city engineer having experience with CPS HR, I guess I would ask, Mayor, what leaned you towards that company more than the other two?
Just, well, for one, talking with Maria, our city engineer, and saying what a good job they did. And then personally talking to, to all three companies. CPS just, CPS HR just went into in-depth what they would do for us, whereas the other ones, the other two said, well, we'll send you some information, and that's how I got the information pamphlets that I sent you. But CPS actually went down through and told me everything that they would do for us. And they seemed really sincere and concerned about getting us a city manager. That's the reason why. Councilman Hannon? Oh, Councilman Torres, go ahead.
I'm ready to make a motion. I move, recommend that CPS HR Consulting be selected to lead the search for the new city manager.
Second motion.
So we have a motion in a second, but before I call for the vote, I just wanted to say and ask council one other thing, is that we do have other hard-to-fill positions opened, and that is in the engineering. Councilman Torres knows this. I think all council knows this, that anytime you have engineer behind your name, it's really hard to fill spots. So what I would like to do, if this does pass, is get with this firm and see what additional cost it would be to have them search for engineering. I think we're looking at, in December, we're looking at engineer one and engineer two, and then we're looking for a project, a senior project manager, no. Associate, associate, I'm sorry, associate engineer. And just get a price, and then once I get that price, I would definitely let council know and get their approval on that. Councilman Torres?
No, I'm good. You have a motion in a second, so.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Motion by Councilman Hannon, second by Councilman Lau. Please vote.
Ms. Watson, since my computer's just dead, I'm a no, but I want to throw a caveat. Only not against any of the companies. I'd just like to get the review. So that's the only reason that I'm.
And motion carries three to two.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I will be reaching out. Councilman Sabrisky, did you?
Yeah, I just, when you're talking about getting extra prices for the other open positions that we have, I think we should probably wait until after the first, you know, couple phases of this, just so that we can see kind of how they do before we throw them a ton of, a ton of open employment opportunities.
Yeah, this wouldn't be something that we would do. I mean, it would definitely have to come through council to get council approval anyways, but just to get a price to see what it would be. We know that to Murray, it was 9,000 additional different candidates. So I just kind of wanted to get a feel for what it might be if they did, but I agree, I agree. Okay, let's see, moving on to line item 6.2, discussion possible action to accept Mark IV's Special Assessment District petition application for improvements for Nevada Pacific Parkway. And deputy city manager, Lydia Oltek?
Good evening, council. Mayor McIntyre? So Mark IV Capital requested from the city the formation of a special assessment district, or SAD, under the developer petition method for the Victory Logistics District Development and other benefiting landowners to finance eligible public improvements for the existing Nevada Pacific Parkway. The city council approved City of Fernley Specialist District Guidelines, or Resolution 25-005, to allow the city to accept, actually to allow guidelines to be created for private property owner special assessment districts. This came soon after, and so far for the Mark IV process, we have had the pre-application meeting. And the application and petition process is 75% complete. Tonight, we're asking for city council approval to move forward with that petition request. After that, there'll be a formal petition that comes before the city council and a public hearing. If approved, we will begin negotiations, and then after that, we obtain security costs from Mark IV. Little bit about the project. The project includes improvements to the existing Nevada Pacific Parkway from I-80, exit 50, all the way to Highway 50. And it includes the road, the bridge over the Union Pacific Railroad, multi-use path, lighting, intersection improvements, curb and gutter, stormwater, and other utility relocations. This here is the north, northernmost section. It's just south of the I-80 exit 50 to Nevada Pacific Parkway. This section includes restriping, median improvements, and right-of-way adjustments. As you continue south through Newlands Drive intersection, where the road widens to six lanes. Proposed Gavin Road is where the Nevada Pacific Parkway Extension Raise Grant actually begins, shown here on the far left. And I'll go back for him just a minute. Those very light blue sections that you can make out are right-of-way acquisition. This is the new Nevada Pacific Parkway and bridge over the Union Pacific Railroad tracks down to Highway 50. We are recommending moving forward with the SAD petition request with the following conditions. Developers to contact other property owners regarding formation of the SAD. Developer to provide a most recent appraisal of Mark IV property to ensure there is current value in excess of assessment, and to provide the timing of SAD formation, bond issuance, and project expenditures. And it's in your packet, but I wanted to let you know and remind you that Mark IV is responsible for all costs of the project before the time the bonds are issued. And the costs include anything from consulting engineers, assessment engineers, project management engineers, underwriters, the city's financial consultant, city's bond counsel, the city's direct staff time set by hourly rate or formula, the cost of preparing the appraisal, and the environmental review. And that's the end of my presentation. I'm ready to take any questions if there are any.
Councilman Torres and then Councilman Mendoza.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for your, sorry, thank you for your presentation. And this first SAD and future impact fees. Thank you, Mark IV as well. Thanks, Scott and Rick. Very exciting stuff. I look forward to continuing to do these. And I'd like to make a motion if there's no questions.
Councilman Mendoza?
Yeah, I do have one question. Thank you for briefing us in our senior staff meeting on this and giving me some insight. Knowing that this is good for the development within our community. The only thing I question is, in the first condition where Mark IV will contact other property owners regarding formation of the SAD, is it simply that they will just contact, or should they be getting buy-in from the other businesses that will be impacted?
That will be part of the contact is to let us know how the contact goes. Do they get buy-in or do they not have buy-in? So it would not change the formation of the SAD in that it would probably still happen if he didn't have complete buy-in. But how that's addressed can be different.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Oltek, for the presentation.
Before Councilman Torres makes the motion, I just want to thank our Victory Logistics Partners and Mark Four Partners for taking the initiative to remedy these sorts of situations. A lot of folks are always asking us why we're not doing the projects before we have a problem. And this is key to solving an issue before it becomes an issue. And so I want to thank them for taking the initiative to do that, putting up a lot of time, energy, effort, money. And it's very much appreciated and we look forward to a continued relationship. Thank you.
Guy too, would like to thank Mark four for all the work that they put in. And I think this is a really big step toward for the city of Fernley for not just the mark for development, but for other developments coming our way as well. So this kind of this kind of leads the way. And I want to thank Mark four for leading the way for the city of Fernley. We appreciate it. Councilman Torres?
I move to approve moving forward with the mark for special assessment district petition request with the following conditions. One, Mark four will contact other property owners regarding information regarding formation of the SAD. Two, to provide most recent appraisal of mark four property to ensure there is current value above assessment. And three, to provide the desired timing of SAD formation, bond issuance and project expenditures.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Hannah, please vote. I would assume that you're going to vote yes. Councilman Torres is yes. And that motion carries five zero. We will now move on to line item six point three, discussion possible action to amend the rules of decorum to include rules for digital appearance for city council members. Councilman Hannah is presenting this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I'm bringing this before the council is the policy for digital appearance was created during the COVID epidemic. We have since we're beyond that now. We don't have that issue anymore. And it's important that council members are attentive and behind the dais. And so with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to direct the city attorney to revise the rules in regards to digital participation, phone participation. With exceptions for illness and family emergencies, additionally, digital appearances should require members to be stationary, camera on participating if they are granted permission to access via Zoom or other digital media. Our request to appear digitally must be approved by the mayor with prior approval. And this sort of follows that was my motion, but this sort of follows the policies that are already in place.
Second that motion.
Thank you.
Councilman Torres?
Yeah, I was just wondering if this was a discussion or we're just going straight. It says discussion. So I guess my question would be like there's five adults up here. I don't need a babysitter to tell me whether or not I need to be on video. A lot of government entities, commissions and city councils have actually gotten away totally from Zoom. And they are calling in because Zoom and Teams takes up more of the clerk's time. If I'm if I'm at a meeting and say a lot of the, this is just an example that I've ran into. I've tried to log on to a meeting and it's a city council meeting. And the motel's computer bank is just off of the lobby. So why would I need to be on video so that everybody in the audience can see all of this, all of the passerby's instead of just being able to answer questions, ask questions and not be on, on video. So does that mean that if, if my wifi or video is not available due to service or like when I was in Canada, I didn't have wifi, so I had to call in. So does that mean I have to take an unexcused absence? Or can we just be adults? And if we don't want to be on video, why, why is that a a big deal? And why do we need to make that part of policy? We were each elected by our wards and by the citizens. And if our ward or our citizens and our voters don't think that we're doing a good job based upon whatever, then they can either discuss that with us or they cannot reelect us. But for that to be a rule for council that we're not mature enough to handle being on a, on a Zoom call without having our cameras on, because I've attended some meetings as well, being sick and nobody wanted to see me on that Zoom meeting. I think this is great overreach.
Councilwoman Zaburski?
We are definitely not the only city that's experiencing this. And after I had talked to you, I did some research of my own and kind of just to get a feel for what just to get a feel for the other side. And they've done a bunch of polls. One, one of the things that I wanted to tell you about was they found out that there's reduced meeting fatigue. So constantly being on with video tiring leads to distractions, allowing officials to turn off their cameras can potentially increase focus on the discussion itself. And then kind of what Mr. Torres was saying about privacy and comfort is if I'm in my home, do I want, you know, might be uncomfortable showing your homes or not having a suitable backdrop. So I definitely think that we need to think about both sides of this because I, I agree that we should trust, trust in our council members enough that that the camera on or off, if they're voting and they're there for the meeting, then, then they're there.
Councilman Hannah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, I mean, we already have rules for attendance. And so we have set forth guidelines on, on when we have to be here and what is an excuse absence and what's not. Some of the, the excuses would be doing the work of the city. If you were in a, at an event or you were Councilman Torres sometimes is in other areas, Washington DC, for example, where he may choose to do that or not. It's something that what I'm asking is that we send this back to our attorney to review, to not create a new rule, but to create rules that are compatible with our requirement to serve the public. And part of that requirement is that we'll be up here and that we face the public and that they see our faces and they hear our comments. And so routinely when we're doing Zoom, we have communication issues where I'm just going to generally speak, people that are on Zoom, not necessarily council, people can't hear us, can't communicate with us. They break up. And so I think it's incumbent upon elected officials, if they choose to use that method for whatever reason that's granted, that they, that they be responsible for, or having a solid connection, which allows them to, to provide that service to do their job for the city. If, if that can't be done, there's always a request by, to the mayor to call in on the phone. And so we've had issues with Zoom where folks have called in because they weren't able to communicate. It's incumbent upon all of us to be here and to be participatory. And it's important for all of us to be transparent with the public. And if we require some members to be here and then other members, we're allowing to, to participate via Zoom with no camera on with our inability to determine if the rules of decorum are being followed. Are they attentive? Are they participating? I think, I think you can raise some questions about how we make that determination that's actually happening. And those are some of the requirements of a city council person is that we be present, attentive and participating. And if you're on Zoom a lot and you're not able to communicate and we're not able to see you and we reference you and you're not responding. Then how, how do we, how does the public know? How do we answer to the public that we're doing our job? I have to come here. I get dressed. I come here and I sit before the public. And I have, you know, people can see my facial expressions. People can hear the tone of my voice. I've appeared via Zoom one time since I've been elected. This is my third year. I had, I had the flu and I was contagious. And so I did it from home and, and that was the only time. And I think that all of us have a responsibility to be here and be attentive and be participating. And I think that there could be, I think that there is some question about the ability to do that constructively, unfettered, without any doubt from the public with the camera on and being attentive. Otherwise, how, how do we, how do we conduct a meeting and know that we're all following the same rules? Maybe that's what I should have said.
Councilman Torres and Councilwoman Zaburski?
I think that if the voters in that ward, for any of us sitting up here have a problem, then the voters and the public need to go to that councilman, which they're fully available for. It is not any of one of us councils, any, any single council person's job to babysit the rest of us. Again, this is huge overreach on your part. We are adults. We are elected. None of us answer to each other. We answer to the voters. We answer to our staff and vice versa. And if I want to call in, I should be allowed to call in. If I'm making comments and I'm voting and I'm not getting lost because I'm not paying attention, that's my responsibility as an adult. I, I think this, this particular issue I think is, is being cherry picked. I think it's very personal. And I think if it was any of the rest of us, it would not have gone to this limit with asking for an agenda item to baby, basically babysit us. If I don't want to be on video, I don't have to be on video and I'm allowed to do that by our current rules of decorum. And if we would get rid of the video and just do call in, I'm 100% for that as well. Way out of line.
Councilman Hannah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your perspective, Councilman Torres. And, and you know, to be honest, you haven't done that. And so you haven't, you haven't called in on Zoom and you haven't turned your camera off and done all that. So I, I I'm assuming that well, maybe I shouldn't assume. I'm assuming that you're here because you think it's important and that it's important for all of us to be here and to face the public. And we know that the public sometimes is not as engaged as we'd like them to be. And we have to hold ourselves to a higher standard. And that standard is we hold our right hand up. We swear on the constitution that we're going to uphold the duties that are set forth. So help us God. And, and part of that is being attentive and participating. And when you appear via Zoom and we can't see you and we can't hear you and and maybe there's some issues with abstaining and not, and not being able to vote, then you're not participating and, and you're not actively doing the work of the people. The people elect us to sit up here. They don't elect us to sit at home or to be in our car or be on vacation on Zoom with the camera off, not participating. That, that should be an unexcused absence, in my opinion. I'm not here to babysit. I'm here every meeting. I have multiple jobs and I'm on multiple boards, just like you. And I, I make it a priority to be here when I have to be here. I've never missed a meeting in my three years. I've never missed a meeting on any of the boards that I've been on because I make it a priority. So I think it's important. I think it's incumbent upon all of us. I'm not here to babysit you, sir. Like I said, you're always here. Most of us are always here. And I think it's becoming, there, there is a problem that is forming here and we need to stop it.
Councilman Lyle?
I've been up here for 11 years. I'm the oldest city councilman up here. And there's been a lot of changes. Right now, I've never seen more chaos on a city council than right now in this last year. I'm going to withdraw my, my second because I see that the council wants chaos. I got a year left. I want chaos. I want to be able to come and go when I please. I mean, we, we have rules, decorum, we're not following them. It's absolute chaos up here. The last mayor who I spent two terms up here with, there was no chaos. There was hit that gavel. We were back talking a legal brief. Right now we are so split up up here. It's phenomenal. I'm withdrawing my, my second. Aaron, you need to start doing something instead of just sitting there. Instead of just sitting there. I know you're, you're a Torres fan. That's fine. But all of us are up here trying to figure out what to do. But I've never seen more chaos. Mayor, you need to get a little stronger up here. Actually, you need to get real strong up here, but we have a lot of chaos. There's people on their phones right now. When Brandy Jensen was sitting back there, there was no phones. Mayor Edgington used to yell at people on the phone. There was no people on the phone in the audience. Right now, this is a weak council and I don't want any more problems. Let's have the chaos. I'm going to withdraw my second. Let's just be just a bunch of chaos up here.
Thank you, Councilwoman Zaburski?
I think I understand both sides. I have a hard time supporting it only because I have not heard it from the public. I've never had a person from the public come up to me and complain and say it makes me uncomfortable or it doesn't feel transparent that somebody's that somebody's on video. I haven't, I haven't had that. And, and I feel the same that I'm not sure it's my place to police the council up here. I would rather have full trust that they're doing what they were voted in to do.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have no second. So therefore, unless somebody wants to second it, therefore the motion dies. We will now move on to line item seven. Public forum is portion of the meeting devoted to the public. If you wish to comment, you can do so at the meeting. Raise your hand, feature Zoom, star nine participating via phone. Is there any public input at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will let this council know that on our next meeting that I will be absent. Pro Tim, Councilwoman Zaburski will be running the meeting. Our next meeting will be August 5th at 5:00 PM. This meeting is adjourned.